Well, he's not. He's a member of the Republican Party.
For now, yeah.
For now, yeah.
Yeah.
Pick on him his first beating.
That's a good way to start it, man.
We can start without it. It's okay, it's seven oh two. I'll call this meeting to order at seven oh two. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder that our meetings are recorded. Review and approval of minutes?
Move to approve. Second.
I have a first from Brian and a second from Eric. Any discussion?
You know, Mulett, on the... When the student Norway made that contribution of five hundred dollars, what's the balance of the unpaid charges?
I have not asked about this yet. But I, I mean, I, I...
You know the balance of the account, I presume? Which is?
The balance of...
Of the unpaid balance. I, I'm just interested to know how much money is in there that, that has. I don't care how much. I want to know how, I mean, what does that normally add? This five hundred dollars, does that pay half of it? Or does that pay ten percent of it?
Uh, maybe twenty.
Twenty percent? So... So like ten thousand dollars? No, no. Well, like, about twenty-five hundred, twenty-five hundred.
But then, towards the end of this school year, lots of parents will pay half.
Okay. That's cool.
We talked about it like a month ago.
More than you'd expect when we were, um...
Well, it's certainly a great outreach for them. I just wondered how much we actually usually have in there. Okay? Thank you.
Tony just made the comment that last year she thought it was right around a thousand dollars.
At the end, that wasn't our deficit at the end of the year. Cool.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Review and approval of claims.
I'm not coming to your casino night. Ten-sided dice?
I'm sure that's for math.
I get ten-sided dice. I'm just saying. People consider that.
I hope they weren't twenty-five hundred bucks.
No, no. Move to pay the bills one last time.
It's nine ninety-nine.
Oh, perfect, thank you.
Don't look ten-sided dice.
I have a first from Brian and a second from Sarah. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion by saying aye. Aye. Motion, all those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Voided checks? None. Public comment? This is anything not on tonight's agenda. Seeing none, I will move on to reports.
First up, Ms. Miller, the elementary principal report.
Hey, and I apologize, I left it on the printer, so I'm... My phone already went off. That's perfect. Okay, so here at two forty-five, we're enrollment at elementary. And two ninety, I included Big Rose and Cam Rose. In, in April, we had our class pictures. Yesterday was last day to order those. Um, classes helped clean up for Arbor Day, our pause assembly. We had the fifth graders going to the First People Buffalo Jump in Elm. And then the first graders took their training trip. On the eighth was the Mountain of Cans Challenge. And the fourth graders had the most cans. They had a huge semi load full of cans that was donated. Yeah. Uh, on the ninth, Head Start toured the elementary. Um, and we had, I believe it was thirty-one. Um, not all Head Start kids. That was parents and some that would be in kindergarten in two years. But they all came through together. And Jennifer Hayes led them through and gave them a tour and answered questions. And they went through the cafeteria as well. And today, we have our P for Two Spring Program. It was, um, we were boisterous and loud voices. And Mr. Berg was very brave for having a lot of instruments. So it was, it was good.
And not a term was passed.
It was, it was, it was really good. Uh, this is the start of field trip season. So you can see we have tomorrow, the fourth graders are going to the Pull Your Own. So they're going to pull matches weeds. Um, third graders have their egg days going. Um, fifth grade on Thursday go to their move up to the high school. So they'll go over and do some activities with the, I should say junior high. Um, they'll do some activities that Ronnie Waterood has planned for them, some of the junior high teachers, to transition them over there. Of course, no school Friday. Um, this year, we're doing something different. We're adding in golf as part of PE. And so the fifth graders are going to take two trips out to the golf course to, um, to learn. And then they have a partnership with the board agreed to allow all fifth graders to golf for free this year. So next two things are Spring Program for grades three through five. I hope you can make it. Um, fourth graders will go to the Lewis and Clark Interpreteners Center. Um, fifth graders are also doing an end-of-year bowling trip to kind of celebrate their last bit of time here in the elementary school. Preschool ends on the twenty-second. Um, then we have awards, pause assemblies, or fun run field day on the twenty-eighth. You'd be more than welcome to come to that and help out. And kindergarten graduation on the twenty-ninth. And that is our last day. Just a few celebrations. Uh, last week was Staff Appreciation Week. And we are, at the elementary, are very fortunate to have a lot of support from home and school. And they really spoiled us throughout the week. We also want to thank the local churches for the coffees that's going. Um, probably missing some, but a lot of support throughout the week. It was great. And then I wanted to give a shout out to Leah McDennis. She won a five hundred dollar healthy classroom grant from Logan Health. And she's going to use it to buy sensory wall materials to put up in the wall outside of third-grade classrooms. So it'll be different things like, you know, doing wall push-ups and things like that to help them with regulating their emotions, get some energy out and that sort of thing. And then, of course, the picture of the pause awards down there. You'll notice there have been adults in those every month. And that's because Student Council has nominated adults every month or whatever it is. So you see that the title staff was awarded this month for achievement.
Any questions? Not seeing any? Thank you, Ms. Miller. Moving on to the junior high high school principal report. I've been giving that report today. I just want to touch on a couple of items. First one, we started the school year with two hundred and fifty-four students, six through twelve. We are at that number once again here in May. Ending the school year with the same number we started with. Couple of items that want to review for the month-end review. Made a couple of trips to Missoula. One of them to U M Journalism Days. You may have seen some pictures on Facebook from that. Just a great event for our journalism class to get down there to Missoula and work with those students. And we also had a trip to Missoula for the Montana State Principals Cup. So two exciting events there. We do have the Arbor Day Cleanup listed as the twenty-fifth. That is going to change. We're going to be doing that in May for the junior high high school. The elementary already completed theirs. But we needed to move that for the junior high high school students. If you had the opportunity to come down and see the school play, I think they did a fantastic job. That was on the twenty-eighth. They also had an afternoon performance on the first. A really funny event, funny play. I really enjoyed it. I think the staff did a great job working with the kids. And we had a ton of kids out. I can't remember the number, but I believe it was over thirty students that participated in it. It was just a lot of fun to go and watch that. A little bit later in April, we had our entrepreneur entrepreneurship market day, where our students developed a product and then they sold it. A lot of people from the community came down. I was walking around and one of the students enticed me to come over and said, "This is your kingdom. You need to buy a pair of shorts from me." And so I bought the pair of shorts from them. So they sold it to me anyhow. So they, they did a great job in entrepreneurship day, getting people to purchase products from whatever they were happening to make. Uh, this month, we had the State Music Festival. That was not in Missoula, that was in Great Falls. I had the opportunity to go down and watch the morning performances. Again, kids performed awesome. I'm not going to share any names, but had the opportunity to go see the violin. And it was just, just phenomenal. It is so amazing to get to watch those kids perform and how well that they, they did at that performance. And then Ms. Miller got to go down and watch them in the afternoon. And I assume her experience was the same in the afternoon, just performing at a very, very high level. And we had a lot of kids going. I got to see four of them. I got to see four of them in the morning. Uh, and then I believe Ms. Miller saw another three or four of them in the afternoon. I think there was eight of them that were down there. I could be off by a number or two, but just a really neat opportunity to get us, get to see our kids perform at that. Uh, then we had our Northern B Divisional. That was here in Shelby. And for the first time in, I believe it's eight years, both the boys and girls qualified for the state tournament. So that was an exciting event. Uh, the girls got second.
The boys got third?
Yeah, the boys got third. Girls got second, the boys got third. So that's exciting. Both teams are here for the state tournament this week. Uh, then for our track team, that was done in Great Falls. And our girls at the district track meet, they got first place. So hopefully you saw that advertised on Facebook and Twitter and the school website. So I want to make sure that we congratulate those that are performing at a high level. We do have the state golf tournament going on right now. That's here in Shelby. Uh, we've hosted it for the last, this is three years in a row now. We will not have it next year, but we will have some other tournaments. Uh, right now, the girls are sitting in second place. Uh, so they're performing very well on the first day. Uh, one of our players had a personal best. And so she is leading our girls right now. So they're doing very well, very exciting. And so hopefully they'll be able to keep that up and bring home another trophy in state golf. We already touched on the eighth grade graduation, or fifth grade orientation. And I just wanted to reiterate that Ms. Waterood did a fantastic job last year when the fifth graders come, came up and introduced them to that building. Excited to have her do those activities again. So expect a really nice transition for those fifth graders going into sixth grade into that new building. We've got a ton of banquets coming up and events going on next week. Yes, the nineteenth. We have our junior senior banquet, that's at six o'clock. Then we've got our senior awards at seven o'clock. It's an opportunity for all of the scholarships that we're giving out. I know the Tool County Education Foundation has a lot of money that they're going to be giving out scholarships this year. So that's going to be very exciting. Uh, two nights later, we have the Booster Club Event. That's on the twenty-first, that's Wednesday. That's down at the golf course. That'll recognize all of our student athletes. Then the coming weekend, we have graduation at three o'clock. And our last day of school with students. We get out at one P M released, and that's on the twenty-ninth. Any questions for what we have going on in the junior high high school building?
Channel Three News, the CBS on Great Falls, had a segment on one of our track athletes this evening. I assume it'll be spawned again tonight at ten.
Yes, it's on Reagan.
Yeah.
And Reagan is having a phenomenal year.
Yep.
Or, I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, so, uh, if you have the opportunity at ten o'clock to watch that on TV, that would be fantastic. Okay?
I would like to add, um, tomorrow night is the Vacloria for the seniors at six thirty in the auditorium.
Yes, and that is not on here, is it?
No.
Okay. Twelve fourteen?
Yep. Probably because it's not a check, I guess.
Still have a question.
Just giving...
I want to make sure we see. Okay, any other questions or comments? Not seeing any. We will move on to the superintendent's schedule. We've got a couple of events coming up. Board of Public Ed is this coming Friday, May sixteenth. We don't have any schools, so that's happy that it's on that particular day. So I'll be down in Great Falls to testify regarding the new accreditation system that the state has rolled out. Then a couple of weeks after that, once we get out of school on June third and fourth, I was asked by MTSBA to be on the Decennial Study Team. The Decennial Study for School Funding is coming up, and that's going to occur this next year. And we're looking for some superintendents to be on that panel to advocate for what we need to take a look at in regards to funding for schools moving forward. So I'll be on that one. The following week after that, I'll be heading back down to Helena, Wednesday through Friday. That's Delegate Assembly. It's an opportunity. You have one superintendent from each region. So there's ten superintendents, sorry, nine superintendents from around the state. They will all get together and talk about what our legislative goals are for the interim and then the next coming session. So I'll be involved in that. So that's kind of my schedule. Any questions on what I have going on over the next month? And then lots of events, lots of school events, I agree, almost every year. Okay, not seeing any, then? I think we're finally ready to move on to action items. First item, we have resignations. We have a host of them. You've got letters for all of these in your packet. I recommend accepting letters of resignation. Dawn, Robin Gauthrie, Ellen and Lyle Rush, Samantha Slicker, and Bobby Smesr. So move.
Second.
I have a first from Brian and a second from Eric. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Moving on to hires. I recommend hiring, and I know this is odd, I've got two titles for her at this point. It's really moving into that Title I position is where I think we're going to be going. But I want to make recommendations for both because she does have those certifications. Recommending that we hire sped and Title I teacher Kristen Hurst at Lane V A plus ten, step eleven, forty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars.
Second.
I have a first from Sarah and a second from Chad. Any discussion?
She is very, very good. Yes, she is.
Excellent.
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 Somebody stole her from us for a year.
We stole her back.
All those in favor, motion by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Moving on to elementary, elementary teacher recommendation. We did have three applicants for the position. We went through the interviews. I thought all of the applicants did a good job. Uh, and then Haley really came out on top in those interviews. So my recommendation is to hire Haley Fredheim at Lane M A plus zero zero, step five, forty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars.
So move. Second.
I have a first from Jared and a second from Chad. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
All right, our next one is a foreign language teacher. We went through the interviewing process for her. Think she would be a fantastic addition to our school. She would be a J one teacher. However, this is a very different program than I have ever gone through. And so there's still some things that need to be worked out. She does not have her J one visa yet. So we need to make sure that we can get that J one visa so that we're able to bring her onboard. I've sent you guys some information about that process and what it's going to look like. It is different, and so it's going to be a learning curve for me. With that said, I do want to make the recommendations that we can continue with the process of getting a foreign language teacher. Very excited if we are able to get this done. That's what was on the interview and the panel for us. So my recommendation is that we hire Carla Francos at Lane M A plus zero zero, step one, forty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. So move.
Second. I have a first from Brian and a second from Sarah. Any discussion?
So where are we in that process?
So we've gone through the interviewing process, and I've reached out to the J one visa sponsor. They have not gotten back to me yet. So I reached out to another J one visa sponsor, and I'm waiting to hear back from them. So that's where we're at in that process. The company that we're going through has never sent anybody to Montana before. They're very confident that they're going to be successful in this process. Most of the teachers that they have brought to the United States from Spain to be Spanish teachers are in Washington and Oregon. And so we found this company, and they've been successful in the past. I talked with schools that have hired these teachers, and they've been really happy with the situation. I think it would be really beneficial for our students to have, first off, a teacher in person, and then especially a teacher that is from Spain and going to speak very fluent Spanish. And the gal had a lot of great energy. I heard, I'm just, I'm really excited about the opportunity.
And she is, how many years of teaching does she have in Spain?
Sorry, what's wrong?
How many years of experience does she have in Spain?
She has five years of teaching experience in Spain. We're bringing her in at J one. She doesn't have any experience here at the head.
Her English was very good. What did you teach in Spain?
What did she teach in Spain?
She teaches Spanish as a foreign, she teaches a foreign, Spanish as a foreign language. So she lives in a part of Spain where they speak the...
Ghanim.
I don't remember what she called it.
I think it would get on the B.
Boss, the boss.
Basque, it could, Basque.
The Basque.
It could have, that's what it could have been. And so they have a very different...
Dialogue.
Either dialect or maybe even a different language. Uh, and so she teaches Spanish as a foreign language in that part of the country.
And English, like the alphabet and writing and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Language, I guess.
I believe she had, she had some experience, which was in Greece where she was teaching as well. She has really...
So she's native, so she can't eat grease too?
Yeah, really, really native.
No kidding.
Okay, well, I'm going to do everything I can.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
All right, we're moving on to high school athletics. I'd like to do all of the high school athletics together, if that works for the board. I don't see anybody shaking their head. I'm going to do all of them together. First recommendation, high school athletic director, Mike White, at five thousand, two hundred dollars. High school, head high school cross-country coach, Jayden Keller, at four thousand, eight hundred dollars. High school volleyball head coach, Lexi Fisher, at four thousand, eight hundred dollars. High school head football coach, Logan Erickson, at four thousand, eight hundred dollars. High school, I'm going to skip that one, I apologize. She should have seen that earlier. Uh, head high school girls basketball coach, Ryan McDermott, at four thousand, eight hundred dollars. Head high school boys basketball coach, Mike White, at four thousand, eight hundred dollars. And head high school wrestling coach, Eric Mertz, at four thousand, eight hundred dollars.
I have a first from Sarah and a second from Chad. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, I recommend that we hire head high school speech and drama coach, Jody Ackelstad, at four thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Second.
I have a first from Sarah and a second from Chad. Brian, would you like to abstain?
I'd rather not, but I suppose. She's expecting me to vote no.
Brian will abstain, and all those in favor, motion by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Moving on to your junior high recommendation. I recommend hiring athletic direct, junior high athletic director, Mike White, at three thousand, two hundred dollars.
I have a first from Jared and a second from Jay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Moving on to summer maintenance. Uh, I had a conversation with Mike. Mulett sent me some numbers for what we were paying for summer lawn care, maintenance, the things that we were going on. And I guess one of my goals is to try and reduce that cost. As such, my expectation is they'll, they'll be able to maintain the ground with two employees rather than three or four. So my recommendation is to hire Mike White at eighteen dollars an hour and Tyler White at fifteen dollars an hour to maintain the summer facility. Do we have a cap? I can answer, or I... I don't, I do not have a cap. My goal would be for it to reduce by about two thousand dollars.
I didn't know they had an hourly cap that we were expecting for those hundred dollars or...
So at forty hours a week for both of them, I'm expecting to save about two thousand dollars. And then we'll take some vacation as well, so. Kyle Fix can, can help support some of that as well.
Second.
I have a first from Sarah and a second from Eric. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
All right, moving on to the Stars Act M O U. The teachers have agreed to the M O U, which allows us to meet the Stars Act qualification of having a base pay of forty-one, six fifteen, as well as meeting the sixty-two percent, uh, base pay of sixty-two percent of average teacher pay. We're actually far in excess of that. But that is, those are the two requirements to get the additional pay through the Stars Act. They'll bring in an additional two hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the district next year with approval of it. My recommendation is to approve the language for the M O U to increase teacher base pay as listed here in the M O U.
So move. Second.
I have a first from Eric and a second from Brian. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I will create new contracts for all of the teachers that this impacts so that they can sign active contracts for the dollar amount. Moving on, I mentioned Kyle Fix supporting us with our summer maintenance. Uh, one of the things that we're struggling with right now is mowers. We have one that works okay. Uh, and so we're looking to try and get a new one. Kyle, uh, went down, talked with John Deere to try and get a quality mower at a reduced price. And based on the conversation that I had with him, which was on Friday, the end of the school day, he believes that this is a, is a quality mower at a quality price. So my recommendation is to buy the fifty-four inch John Deere for six thousand, six hundred, thirty-five dollars and eighty-one cents using transportation funds. using transportation fund dollars to do that. So move.
I have a first from Eric and a second from Sarah. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor motion by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Moving on to the school-based health center. Met with Ricky, we had a good conversation. We needed to make a couple of changes to the document. One of the major changes that the health department asked, not the health department, sorry, the Mariah's Healthcare asked for was to change it to a two-year agreement. And the reason being, they felt it would give them an opportunity to get additional grants for the long-term. Is that an accurate... As such, I would love the opportunity for them to get more grants. We've had a successful year, and so my recommendation is to accept that change and approve the draft agreement with the school-based health center for two years.
Didn't end up in a closet.
So move.
I have a first from Brian and a second from Chad. Any discussion?
With a trailer.
All those in favor motion by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
All right, moving on to policies. We are on first reading for two policies. I recommend approving upon first reading Board Policy Thirty-One Twenty-Two P One, Attendance Policy, Attendance Procedures, and Board Policy Thirty-Four Sixteen, Administering Medicines to Students.
I have a first from Chad and a second from Sarah. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor motion by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
All right, moving on to second reading. We have two policies to approve on second reading. I recommend approving upon second reading Board Policy Forty-Three Thirty, Community Use of School Facilities, and Board Policy Forty-Three Thirty P One, Community Use of Facilities, Rules and Regulations for Building Use.
I have a first from Sarah and a second from Jared. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor motion by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Do you have any transportation or attendance agreements?
None.
Are you ready to move on to discussion items?
Yep.
All right, moving on to discussion items. You have a copy of the calendar here. It still says draft at this point. But I wanted to let you know that MHSA, um, the twenty-eighth of last month, approved the change for district and divisional basketball. One of the issues that we had is district basketball was going to be the same weekend as state wrestling. First time I've ever seen that happen. As a result, we had to go to MHSA and ask them to move our district tournament to a week later. Because we're doing a combined divisional tournament next year, we're able to do that. That combined tournament is scheduled for here in Shelby. That's why we have those Thursday, Friday off. And so the Thursday, Friday, which was originally on that twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, when we had the divisional of boys basketball, divisional combined basketball tournament schedule, is now moved to that March fifth and sixth, and so that alters the calendar a little bit. So informational purpose for you. If you don't know what that is, I will go draft and get this information out to you.
So we'll split that one seventy-one, right?
Yeah, still, still at one hundred and seventy-one days. Yep, yep, just change those two days. Okay? Any questions or discussion on that finalized calendar? Okay, I'll get that out. Uh, next item, we have graduation coming up. I'd love to know which board members are going to be in attendance so we know how many chairs to, to get set up for everyone. How about this? Chad, are you gonna be there?
Yep.
You gonna be there?
Think so.
Yeah.
I'll let you know tomorrow.
Okay?
Yes, I will be there.
Yes. Angela?
Yep.
Negative. Negative, okay?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
No.
You can.
Who's not put me down to this plan?
Okay. All right, I got...
Perhaps my replacement will be there.
Okay? We can ask him when the time comes.
It's not too late to leave as right as they alter.
All right, well, we'll, we'll make sure that we get it, get it set up. And I'll be getting information out to you ahead of time, so we're ready to go on that. Uh, for walkthrough and training, had an opportunity to speak with Angela a little bit. I think she's reached out to MTSBA in regards to a possible training. We did that, so last year or two years ago?
No, it was last year.
We did it last year. Looking to do something similar again where we have some additional board training. We're gonna have a new board member coming on, uh, give that, give an opportunity for some information from MTSBA. Need to look at a date to try and do that. I know last year we did the walkthrough, the training, and a board meeting, so we kind of did everything in one day, so people didn't need to come in on multiple days. If the board is interested in doing that, right now we are scheduled for June tenth. Uh, if a date like that would work, we can, we can work on trying to get that set up. Do you remember how long the training was?
It was four hours last year. We did like nine to noon, had lunch, and then we did the walkthrough, and then we had a small break before the board meeting. So it would be similar to...
It would be a full day, so I guess the, the question is... We'll be in Europe.
I will be in Ohio.
Ohio. Charlie's somewhere else. Charlie will be somewhere else.
Maybe you can get a desk to put your schedule.
Okay, all right, so maybe we, uh, Angela and I will arrive and get some stuff out to the board.
I'm gonna be in Sydney.
Okay.
I'll be working all day that day.
Okay.
No, Sydney might.
Okay, we will not schedule it for that day. But we still have a board meeting that night.
Yeah, we do.
Not, not for the people that will be out of the country or anything like that.
Yep.
Okay, we will, we'll, we'll work on that.
Yeah, we could even shoot for July for a meeting day, so. I just think...
I'll get some information out and...
Throughout the summer is not as good as during the school year.
Okay. We can look at...
You get perhaps everywhere in the summer.
We do.
It's, I find it quite disruptive to not being...
So in past years, we have done it on Thanksgiving dinner lunch day.
I think that would be cool. I mean...
That's a pretty good change. I was thinking more like slides. If this that way, there's nobody in the school to defeat the purpose of that. We're there because we care.
Yeah.
And that, we're taking time to, and we can see things, we can view things.
Do you wanna try and do it before the end of the school year, or are you looking?
I think we should do it in the first of the game, like in September.
In September?
Yeah.
'Cause I think it's beneficial for us to see the teachers.
They, they... Walking around, looking around. Yeah, I believe, I mean, yeah.
The summer walkthrough had volume for maintenance that could be done over the summer. But the part, the school part, you're right.
Yeah, and, and also the problem with it, the summer was, is that the, the, there was desks all over the place, crap everywhere, I mean, sorry, what it was. And, uh, it's, it's, it's kind of nice to see the operations.
Okay.
And, I mean, unless you're really just concerned with looking at the building, which you could probably do any of that, whatever, but...
Okay.
And if you work it right, the food class makes lunch for you.
Okay, so we will work on a September walkthrough. And maybe a board training just in the evening, like a two-hour board training from like five to seven before a July board meeting?
Maybe.
Or...
You know, you did those a couple of times, and they were quite a while.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I mean, even if you just talk about budgetary processes or all of those, they're big. I mean, not everybody's in accounting.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that, that, I, I thought that was always good.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I'll, I'll... We'll work on it.
Doesn't count, okay.
Okay. All right, uh, moving on to hiring update, open positions. You know, I continue to have a few positions posted. This is more in case of other things occurring. I feel like we are fully staffed right now. Nevertheless, if we do get an English teacher that applies, we'll highly consider that type of role for the school district. But as we are sitting right now in the teaching room, I think we are, are pretty good with the staff that we have ready to go for next year. Well, two, two positions that we do have open is our payroll clerk, as well as a janitorial position. Both of those positions need to get filled. I do have applicants. I have an applicant for one of them, and I have two applicants for the other one. So hopefully we'll get an interview schedule for next week, or a week after, get somebody on board, especially for that janitorial position for the summer projects that we have. And then payroll, hopefully we'll have an opportunity to get some training done this summer so that we're, we're ready to go.
We don't want to burn Millet out.
I, I agree.
We need more applicants.
So we have it advertised, we, it's advertised in the newspaper, it's advertised on the website, it's advertised for OBI. Moving on to our year-end recognition reception. That is on Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, that is at four thirty. We recognize our retirees, but I don't believe we have any retirees this year. We'll have Teacher of the Year, Classmate Employee of the Year, and then we'll recognize Years of Service. That'll occur down at the golf course on the twenty-seventh. Any other items for discussion?
Sue, the time of day, please.
Sorry, what's wrong?
The time of day, repeat it again, please.
So four thirty, down at the golf course.
We normally get started about five. We, people are milling around, four thirty to five, and we start getting work about five.
So we need four fifteen.
Okay. That works. All right, moving on to correspondence. First item is the Mariah's Healthcare information from April. Ricky is here tonight, so if you have questions, or Ricky, do you wanna...
I don't like the one that says, "I'll have to give it to me." Do you guys want me to read it to you?
No.
Do you have any questions?
Been successful. I'm glad we went down this road.
We've appreciated the opportunity and been able to touch many lives, so. We just hope to keep expanding. We will have some change next year. We do, we will be bringing on a new full-time nurse, not new to us, but somebody new. Melissa will be going to our lab, so we'll have a full-time RN. So we'd love to use the last one, who can think of things?
Okay.
She does not want to be bored, so.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments in regards to the health center? Not seeing any. Moving on, you do have a letter in here, communication from MHSA. We were awarded the Class A Golf Tournament for the spring of 2026. It's the first time that Shelby has hosted that since, I believe it was 2002. So that's an exciting opportunity to, to bring a different group of kids, administrators, schools, to our community. So I think that's a very great event.
Should that be fall?
It's fall, October. So I... No, no, no. Yes, yes.
They play there in the fall.
Yeah, they play, they play in the fall.
They're only in a plane.
Yeah, yeah, so in the, in the spring of twenty-six...
They get turned a plane in the rain.
Yeah, in the spring of twenty-six, we had the Class C Tournament here, and then in the fall, we have the Class A. Already talked about state golf, girls are in second right now. I want to let you know that I was voted as the North Central Superintendent of the Year from our region, so I'll be applying for the State Superintendent of the Year recognition. And then, congratulations. Thank you. And then the final item, Dr. Ackelstad, thank you for your service. The board has a, a card for you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Your years of service.
Spoke the prayer. That didn't always happen.
All right, our next scheduled board meeting is on June tenth at seven PM. Sarah and Eric will be gone. We'll adjourn for about five minutes, and then we'll open it back up for our next meeting. We'll adjourn at seven forty-eight.
Do you guys have some coffee and cookies and fruits? Please.
Please. We're trying, we're asking nicely.
We weathered a lot of storms, Brian. I don't think neither one of us would have been nearly as successful without the other board members.
No, no.
To be clear.
No, and I wouldn't have gotten through.
No.
And I wouldn't have gotten through some of those.
No.
No. No.
No.
Yeah. And this one might not have been.
That would be...
Might have been full bowl.
Oh, yeah, well. It's warm.
I was laying on purpose 'cause I thought maybe we should make you sweat a little.
No, I know, that, that is not how this, I'm not leaving you.
Okay.
I have some packages to be delivered here.
Benjamin's been nice today, patient tonight.
Never heard of him.
They're not actually warm.
They kind of crashed the door.
They're not.
This sounds cheesy, but I came in my green truck, and I could find a good spot to park. Just try to come in from the other way.
Well, see you later. Coffee, I want some. Bye.
Well, that's pretty much it.
Yeah.
That's pretty old, but seatbelt.
That's what it looks like.
Looks better than that.
It doesn't look too bad, I'm right.
Not nearly as intimidating as I thought it was.
Sixteen years?
It is a little odd, but from that side, I would say.
I probably write first.
I can say that you rode the community.
Millet, did you make the cookies?
Thank you.
These look like homemade.
They are homemade.
By you, from your home.
She used her own gift card and whistle stock.
You did that last year, didn't you?
It's okay. Rather than me eating just one cookie than...
We gave you... Yeah, you got like a different dessert last time from Whistle Stock. That's funny.
You and I got one for you.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, every day, stringy. Yeah, we had a string of them.
We were supposed to talk to each other.
Absolutely. We yelled and screamed them. They looked better. My life got a lot easier.
I almost grabbed one. I was like, oh, yeah.
He was, he was mad. He was against anything. You could come for the... Well, there's a good time. I was fooling. I was like, oh, it's just... I had better believe it. He, he, I don't know, I don't know, I was taking this statement with him, a jappy, but they're funding it.
I do. Have you not talked to them? Have you not talked to them about who I went?
Um, no. It was, I, I called this more than John and John. I just like shut them on the door.
I didn't pay to do it. It's about, he said, yeah, when Mason called them, he said, considering I have my golden wild, he said I look pretty good.
He was really upset about that part. He was like, I probably... He's bad, he's done, and I'm like, actually, we had... And it was no easier way to end up getting called to go golf and all your stuff back in the golf bag. Get comfortable with that. That's when it's done. He moved right back and moved all back.
They have the same good choice.
I have this, I have this...
If you are a student, you return, and I check on it.
Yeah.
And nowadays, they do have a really fun break where they just...
He's the third out of the group, so... We did have a run. We need so much to do.
Okay, I'm gonna take it to the one-off. Well, it's probably, I mean, it's really a recent, a golf walk.
Yes, yes, thank you. I stuck to my passion. Thank you.
Good job.
Well, it's funny, cause Ken and Ethan have been golfing a lot together, and I didn't realize that that was... Oh, you did? Well, he's got his pass number.
It was about 420.
He'll end up being contacted and then...
It was 420.
I would give you that.
Yeah, there you go. And how many kids were in contact with them together?
Um, I don't know. My class, I think it was sixty, something.
Cause it was four hundred and miles.
Good.
I have no idea how many.
And my class was eighty-five.
My class is small.
No, we were just...
It still was eliminated, but all of them usually is a loose tape.
No, I think we did, we're here for the town now.
It's ten hour, but we're in a close state, but I'm good.
He said...
Actually, they were, they were very efficient media.
I don't, oh, hell.
We started. Over at the baseball field, they have like...
Yeah, I know the Peter.
Everybody ready?
It's all ready.
I'll call this meeting to order at 7:57. Oh, you ready? Why is it quiet? They're all staring.
How does this go?
Just come stand up here.
Like Mary, she's winter gold.
I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear...
That I will support...
That I will support...
Protect...
Protect.
And defend the Constitution of the United States.
And defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution for the State of Montana.
And the Constitution for the State of Montana.
And I will discharge the duties of my office...
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I did verify with OBI that I can serve on two boards. Nobody thinks that's a good idea? I don't either, but, I don't know. It's easier to get on one than it is to get off one.
Hi, it's your star.
Two benches.
Alright, we will now call for nomination of chairman.
Nominate Angela.
Second.
I have a first from Eric and a second from Jay to nominate me. Any other nominations? Seeing none. All those in favor, motion by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Call for nomination of vice chairman?
Nominate Chad.
I have a first from Eric and a second from Jay to nominate Chad. Any more nominees? Seeing none. All those in favor, motion by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Appointment of clerk?
I move to appoint Molette.
I have a first from Jay and a second from Chad for Molette. Any other nominations? Seeing none. All those in favor, motion by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. You will see, um, I did, there is a list of the committees in the back of the packet, and then you do have a draft of what I'm looking to change it to. Everyone is assigned to three committees, um, except myself. I'm on four. But, um, if you want to look that over, that is the committees that I'm looking at assigning.
I moved to accept the minutes.
I have a first from Sarah and a second from Jared. Any discussion?
Like I told Jay, I can't believe you won't put me in negotiations committee.
I'm gonna miss Mr. Ackles dead there a little bit.
All those in favor, motion by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned at 8:02.